And the first item on the agenda is presentation by Garfield Asset Management. We've received their initial market study. We're looking very positive. We're anxious to hear about the next steps in your proposal. So. Did I not turn that on? Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have trouble with technology. I got a lot of help right here, so anyway. Anyway, so we welcome you. Thank you for coming over this afternoon. And can you give us a briefing? Give us your perception on this market study and.
Absolutely. I think we sent a couple of documents. Okay, perfect. That's a pretty live mic there.
Let's see. Introduce yourselves.
Yeah, hi. I'm Steve Galberth. I'm the Chief Development Officer for Garfield Public Private. We, I think we, most of us met, met back in March. Walter Proceski runs our asset management company, and he's going to go through the CBRE report so that every company, everybody kind of understands what that is. And I expect you have some questions, so maybe there's some back and forth if you've had a chance to look at the report and, but I think we'll give you the highlights of that. And then I think we're going to talk about, you know, we're here, oh, sorry. And I've got, I've got Mark Bullard, our Senior VP of Design and Construction, and Ray Garfield, our Chairman. You guys may, may have, both of them have probably spoken as well, but.
Eighteen.
The whole team, right? So we're here to, to talk about Task One. So as, as you guys remember, we have a professional services agreement. It's got a series of items on it. And I think when you guys were approving that, you approved it that, that the city council would have the opportunity to then say, let's go on to the next phase. And so we're here to have that conversation to move into Phase, Task Two and Three, which work, they coincide together. Task Two, not just us, it's also an architectural firm. It's an interior design firm and some other base consultants that will be involved in the design. So Task Two is really the design piece. And Task Three is then the estimating and construction feasibility, schedule, all that. So we'll put together the, the values of what the cost of this building will be and then how quickly it can be built. So that's, that's Task Two and Task Three. And the reason we're here to talk to you is because we think that the results of Task One were positive. We think that the results of Task One show that this absolutely is something you guys should continue to keep working towards. And, and with that, I'll let Walter kind of go into the.
Want the task first or the.
Um, we can come back to that if we need it. You want.
If you do the extraction of the CBRE study, that's what we're just talking through right now.
And we know this is going to be a conversation, so if you have, anything comes up, I'll just step back up here, but he's going to talk about, just, just about the CBRE report.
Yeah, and I'm certainly any questions you have, I'm happy to discuss. I'm going to go through some highlights rather than bore you with eighty-two pages of, of this data. But the summary is it strongly supports moving forward to the next step. Okay, there's, the city of Greenville is losing business to surrounding areas because there isn't an upscale hotel convention center in the market. Okay? There's primary research in the study that was conducted with key constituents saying that they bring their business to outside areas because there isn't the facility to house them. And I think even more important is a hotel that is built, like we're proposing here, will perform well, right? This is not something that, that we think is just a, something we, you should build and support, all right? It'll, it'll be able to stand on its own. So the first, the first page I have up here is the recommended programming. So when CBRE first did the study, we had a lot of dialogue back and forth because as you're, we have responsibility to you to make sure that what's delivered is exactly what you're looking for and what the, what you need. So again, this is all CBRE's data, okay? We, it's all objective, third-party data. This is not, these, what I present to you when we get to numbers is not Garfield numbers, okay? This is all third-party. We didn't have anything to do with it. We just talked to them about programming. So what they recommend is one hundred and seventy-five rooms, about fourteen thousand square feet of meeting space with a restaurant. And what we look at is proposing in, a restaurant that's accessible from the exterior, right? So it's not something you have to walk through a hotel lobby, but if you think about going to a retail space, having a restaurant area there. Can we go to the next? Okay. Here is what CBRE says the hotel will do upon stabilization. So thirty year after opening, this is in 2030, right? So if we break ground and start building in 2020, the hotel opens in 2028, 2030 is the thirty year. About sixty-eight percent.
Thirty year or three year?
It's the third, it's the third year after opening. This is, it's going to be.
Third.
Yeah, thirty year, sorry. So sixty-eight percent occupancy, that's a hundred and seventy-nine dollar average daily rate. And if you can scroll down for me. Profitability is before debt service is expected to be about three and a half million dollars. This is year three. Okay? And again, these are, these are projections. Obviously, there's a lot of massaging to be had as far as brand, exact location, restaurant concepts, et cetera, but this is their high level.
Why in your numbers here do you have zero on property tax?
Because this is going to be a tax-exempt project, is what we're proposing.
I can touch on, these projects in order to be tax-exempt, they're, this will be, this will be owned by a five oh one C three. Typically, it's an LGC, a local government corporation, or some cities have used an MDD, a municipal development district. But it's the property, this is, this is the asset for the city of Greenville. It's not privately owned by a private developer. And who directed you to provide these numbers based on a city-owned project? So it's, 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 it's owned by an LGC. It's not owned by the city. Pieces of that can be a, a city-owned project. Pieces like the meeting space could be owned by the city. The land could be owned by the city. We would, we would expect that the land would be conveyed to the city. Why do you believe that?
I guess the question is why is this assuming that it would not be privately owned? Right, Philip?
Yes. Well, why is this assumed it would not be privately owned? A couple of things. If you, and we've, we've talked about this maybe in a previous presentation, we can, we can talk about it in, in detail. If you were to produce a hotel privately, where it pays for the land, it pays for ad valour taxes, and it pays sales tax and all those things, typically, you're going to go out and you're going to get a, a construction loan or a mini perm, or you're going to go back and get a mortgage, maybe that's fifty percent of the, of the loan. And right now, that's going to be at. Nine or ten percent? So, so think of that. Fifty percent of the debt now is at nine or ten percent. And then you're going to have an equity contribution that it, that legally has to be at least fifteen percent. So let's say it's fifteen or twenty percent, and that's going to be at maybe a twenty-five percent internal rate of return, maybe, maybe thirty percent, okay? So you take that, and that's starting, let's say, the day of construction. So you have, you know, almost two years of construction, a couple of years of getting the building ramped up. And so you're getting a twenty-five to thirty percent return per year for those five years, and then that property gets sold. That's how, that's how a private developer would do it. They would sell the property and flip it. There's two other pieces because now there's a gap. The city typically on a deal like this would put in incentives, whether it's three-eighty grants or tax rebates or all those, so that's a little piece of it. But then there's also this piece, the gap piece, which is called a mezzanine loan. Mezzanine loans are mid, mid-teens. So in order to make a, a hotel pencil, city-owned versus privately, city-owned is going to end up being cost of capital of. Five and a half percent, six percent. And if you do it privately, it's going to be twelve, thirteen, fourteen percent. They just, it doesn't just, it just doesn't pencil, especially meeting space, restaurants, things like that. You can go in and build a eighty-key hotel with no meeting space and a, and just a quick little turbo chef kitchen and do that all day long. But you start, a city wants to bring in a facility like this because it's high-impact business. It's not just transient lodging for people to come in and stay when they're driving down the road. You want to bring in the Association of County Clerks. You want to bring in the State Troopers Association. You want to bring in group after group after group that would never come to Greenville unless they had this, this group. It's, it's, you're bringing in two and three-night groups, and they'll come in and do that. If you can't get a room block agreement with a hotel and meeting space at the same time, those groups just don't come. And so you, you really kind of miss out on that business. So some cities have done it, you know, I think Waxahachie, right, has done, they did, the city owned the meeting space and they let a private hotel do this, but that, it just does not work. So.
But I think to answer your question, when they made their original proposal here, they mentioned that this property would be tax-exempt.
Yeah, yeah. This, this is the model that we typically show. So it was my understanding, though, that the study would be the feasibility of a civic center or a convention center here not dependent, you know, upon the city financing.
So, so this study was conducted purely on the, on the performance of the hotel.
So would it be possible to get numbers if the city wasn't financing it to see if it would be feasible to survive on its own?
The only number that would change on this statement would be property tax, right? So, but the thing, the issue is, and I'll, if you go to the next.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, and that's, that's really Tasks Four and Five. That's, we've got to understand what this thing costs, how big it is, and then we can come up with the, the financing. And so that's, if you look at the, our proposal, Tasks Four and Five are really the financial plan, and we absolutely can look at this model. But to get to Task Four or Five, we have to spend a whole bunch more money. When this study is supposed to tell us feasibly whether this. No. To go any further or not. This, this, no, this, this market study is showing us the performance of the hotel, and that's, that's Task One, and that's always been the understanding of Task One. You, you don't, you don't do Task One, and then you have the answer to Task One through Six. It's Task One tells us, and we all get together, do we want to continue to go forward? Does this sound like a good idea? And then we go on to Task Two and Three. Then we understand what the hotel costs. Then we take it all together, and we put together a financial model and a business plan for that, for that hotel. And we can absolutely look at the tax-exempt model versus a taxable private model, and I think you'll, you'll see the day and night difference.
I think, and when CBRE does this, right, this could have easily come back and said, Greenville can't handle a convention center hotel. There's not demand in Greenville for a convention center hotel. And so there'd be no point in moving to the next steps unless we knew whether or not a new convention center facility could be supported in Greenville, right? And that's what this task was for. These numbers show us that yes, there is, there is demand in Greenville. Greenville needs a, a more upscale hotel with a convention center attached. The next step would be pricing it out, costing it out. We go to the next, can we go to the next page? I think this answers some of your questions here.
Walter?
Yes, sir.
We've been developing these convention center hotels for twenty-eight years now. One is privately owned. That's in Lubbock. It's called the Overton Hotel. The city of, the city of Lubbock, back in two thousand and seven, when they selected us, said they wanted to have a privately-owned hotel. But the city and private supporters, foundations, contributed about thirty-four percent of the total cost of the hotel and conference center that was built in Lubbock. Still the only full-service hotel in Lubbock, and it's a great asset. That's what I wanted to make. We believe that this development, and the CBRE study shows that hotel will perform, it'll generate three and a half million dollars in net operating income in year three and beyond. It'll grow, and so it can amortize a significant amount of debt. But it's an upscale hotel. It's a full-service hotel. It has a full-service three-meal-a-day restaurant. It has all this meeting space that must be built, the ballroom, the boardrooms, the pre-function areas and so forth. Private hotel developers that come here are going to build a Hampton Inn. They're going to build maybe a courtyard, which is a nice, still select-service hotel. Fairfield Inn, you know, all the select-service and limited-service hotels. And they've been able to do that for a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, maybe two hundred thousand dollars per room in developing that. Maybe they have two-room modules that are meeting space in the facility. They have a, a small kitchen for scrambled eggs in the morning and maybe some, some beer and some cheese that are laid out in the evening, but no three-meal-a-day restaurant, no, no room service. We were asked to do an analysis of what we could do to produce high-impact business here. Two- and three-day business, where people will spend a hundred and eighty dollars or two hundred dollars a night on a hotel room, and they'll have a full-service meal, maybe two or three over the next, you know, two or three days, and shop at your retail stores and spend a lot of money and create a lot of additional tax revenue for the community. We feel that it's as essential a piece of a community as having a great City Hall, as having a great library system. It's where your citizens are going to have their weddings. It's where they're going to celebrate their graduations. They want a nice meal on a Friday or Saturday night, they'll come to that particular restaurant. It just costs more to do this hotel than any private developer can do. We can present a privately-owned hotel and publicly-owned meeting space, and we'll do that if you'd like us to do that. But as Steve and Walter have said, it's a much more expensive proposition. This hotel, if it was built privately, you'd have to be asked to put up a substantial subsidy to a private owner, a subsidy. Because the private owner's going to own the hotel, the private owner's going to get the cash flow for the next thirty years, and the private owners will flip out of the property three to four, maybe five times in a thirty-year period. So your headquarters hotel for your convention space, you're not going to know who's going to own it in ten years, maybe not in five or six. You won't, certainly won't know who's going to own it in twenty years. And we've seen around the country that those properties are not maintained. So the model that we've used now for twenty-eight years, the first tax-exempt hotel we did in two thousand for Overland Park, Kansas. And it was the fourth tax-exempt hotel done in the nation. Now there are over thirty that have been done that are tax-exempt around the country. It's cheaper to build because we don't have to pay the state sales tax on the hard materials we build in the building. We'll save three million in the construction. If we can, and, and this is the one property because it is a public benefit, that the attorneys will agree that is a public benefit and can be financed with tax-exempt dollars. And tax-exempt bonds are extraordinarily low compared to conventional financing, as Steve said. Trying to get a twenty-five or thirty percent return for equity private owners is a big burden on a hotel. Paying a bank eight, nine, ten percent on their mortgage is a big burden on the hotel. So your, your question of why we're presenting this as a tax-exempt hotel is because we've been doing it for twenty-eight years, and we know it's better to suggest to the city that their contribution be an investment for the city and its taxpayers rather than a subsidy to a private owner who you know is going to sell the property within the next six years.
And Ray, the other, one other thing that I think we may have touched on is there's a, there's a program, a state program for hot tax and sales tax rebates for ten years of, of the state's portion, which could likely be nine, ten, eleven million dollars back to the city of Greenville. So that, that property has to be tax-exempt in order to get, to get that.
Yeah, it's a state program that started with the city of Houston in two thousand so that they could build the Hilton Americas Hotel downtown for the Brown Center and get it open before a Super Bowl was held there. And now there are sixty-five cities in the state of Texas that are qualified by our legislature to be qualified hotels, hotels that are built within one thousand feet of a convention center as a headquarters hotel. So the next legislative session, we would encourage you to be there to request that they add you to that list. So that they're six, they get six percent hotel occupancy tax from every hotel in the, in the state. That six percent gets rebated to the city every year for ten years, along with their portion of sales tax from all the sales of that particular facility. So it is a great program, and it, and it's beneficial, and it was created so that cities could do this headquarters hotel. So Mr. Spencer, it is, it's important to know that, and hopefully we were selected because we've done this more successfully than any firm, we think, in the country, certainly in Texas. And, and we just, by trial and error, I guess, coming around to the idea that this is a better delivery for a city than any purely privately-owned hotel. And again, the quality of hotel that we looked at, that CBRE looked at, to be the headquarters hotel for your convention center, and by the way, in Texas, the definition of a convention center for these qualified hotels is just ten thousand square feet, which anyone would call a conference center. But now, when we went to Abilene, for example, to build that Doubletree for the city of Abilene, their nineteen-sixty Civic Center across the street, which has a two-thousand-seat auditorium as part of it as well, was rebranded as a convention center so that they would qualify when our hotel was built across the street to act as its headquarters hotel. And it is a tax-exempt hotel, as, as, as I say, all, all except for the Lubbock Hotel that we've built around the country. Our partner in Lubbock, the Moody Foundation, the first billion-dollar foundation in the state of Texas, which has a hundred-year-old hotel operating company, wanted to do something for Texas Tech University and volunteered to come in and purchase some land and put up five million in a, in a foundation grant as well, and borrow the money from a bank to build the Overton Hotel there. It's an unusual delivery compared to everything else that we've done, but it worked and it works, still works for them. Any other questions that I might ask and answer? Is the tax-exempt status in perpetuity, or is it, does it have a limitation? No, it, it, we get the tax opinion from the tax attorneys. You sell a thirty-year bond, it's a tax-exempt bond for the hotel. The city's contribution typically is a tax-exempt city bond of some kind, in whatever contributions they may be. The hotel revenue bonds, if you can picture the podium of the hotel and the hotel tower, the podium's got all the meeting space and the restaurant and pre-function areas, and you got their hotel rooms tower. The way these have operated here in Texas is that the contribution that our municipal clients have made gives them total ownership of the podium of the hotel, the meeting space, et cetera. The hotel tower is typically owned by a not-for-profit entity that the city sets up. So in Abilene, they set up a local government corporation, they appointed all the board members, they own that hotel. But Hilton Corporation operates a hundred percent of the facilities, city, the city-owned facility and the not-for-profit-owned facility. And remember, the not-for-profit is acting as, it really is, is your not-for-profit. So nominally, it is a city-owned hotel. And so all of this is geared to support your Convention and Visitors Bureau and the luring of associations and conventions that'll come into your community. All the cash flow over the next thirty years, in excess of amortizing the mortgage, goes to the city. And in thirty years, when the mortgage is completely paid for, the city owns everything. The, no, the not-for-profit goes away and the city owns everything. So now it owns, call it a hundred-million-dollar asset with this net operating income coming in every year and no mortgage that you'd have to pay at that time.
So that three and a half million dollars of revenue, the NOI that we saw on that chart, that goes to amortized bonds that we go out on the open market and sell that are not, the city doesn't, to have to back all of those. The city, city, you know, there's, there's a tranche or two or three possibly that are, that stand on their own for the hotel. The city is not, is not, you know, that's not coming against the taxes of the city.
Yeah, and so we understand. I mean, this is, this is really revolutionary for most city councils that we've talked around the country. They've never done it before. They want to understand it, and that's why we take these steps as Phase One, to invite a firm like CBRE Hotels to come in and spend time and examine the entire market, figure out what a hotel, an upscale, full-service hotel will do with the meeting space, and give us this sort of report. And, and so it informs us enough to go to the next stages, which are basically some concept plans and some pre-construction numbers from a contractor and, and other subcontractors that are there. It'll be able to say, okay, this is going to cost you sixty million dollars, seventy, eighty, I don't know what it is. $60 million, $70, $80, I don't know what it is, that's what the next few months will tell us. And then we'll be able to say, with that $3.4 million of net operating income, how many bonds that'll amortize every year? It won't be the full $60 million, there'll be a gap for this property, because we're, again, we're not building another Hampton Inn here.
And that's tasks four and five, and I think what's yet to be seen is really what level that hotel is at, what level it can, we can afford here to do. What level of service, what level of, you know, is it more of a limited-service hotel on steroids with a restaurant and a lot of meeting space? What, how many rooms are we talking about? And that's really what the, you know, the things that CBRE puts in there is really talking about, hey, let's look at this number of keys, let's look at this much meeting space, and that's what we then do, we now build that, build a model of that, and we price it out. And then, task four and five, we take this NOI number, we take any of the incentives that we know the city has, we know, we take the money that we think the city can get back from the state, and we start building that model and say, okay, this is what kind of incentive package it would have to occur here to make this happen.
You're sure to have, you're sure to have a gap, I can't tell you what that gap's gonna be because of all the things that Steve just said and that Walter's saying. But I can tell you with confidence that to build your convention center and your hotel, it will take necessary public support, a public-private partnership. Every hotel that we've done for 28 years has required that, because we're not building private, limited-service hotels, 80, 100-room, 110-room hotels with no meeting space and no kitchen to speak of, et cetera. That's just not the purpose of this hotel. I'll sit down, but I'll answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we talked about, kind of, where CBRE thinks is the sweet spot for a hotel, right? We talked about what they think a hotel like this can do. So the next couple pages, I just wanna walk you through why they think that and how they came to that conclusion, okay? So, I mean, the first highlight I have here is, is they specifically came into the market and conducted interviews with constituents, right? And the first, furthermore, after interviews with economic development officials and local hoteliers, the area includes a significant amount of corporate demand not staying in Greenville because of a lack of facilities, right? So, and we have a chart in here, we'll get to, you'll see what your hotel market's made of, and was that what Ray said, 80 rooms, 100-room hotels don't meet this demand, and that's not what we're proposing here. We'll go on to the next. So, an other highlight I have here, interviews in the marketplace indicate that visiting teams and university-related demand and events are held in McKinney and Rockwall because they don't have facilities. So when CBRE did this, they learned that teams that come to East Texas A&amp;M, right, who's now Division One, they want, there are no hotels in Greenville to support them, so they have to travel to go. So where do they store bags, where do they have pre-game meetings? This is all went into CBRE's thought process when they conducted this. This chart down here, existing hotel rooms within a 10-mile radius, there's not one hotel that has more than 80 rooms, right? There's just, there's no accommodation. Furthermore, there's only three hotels or four hotels that are considered mid-scale hotels, everything else is economy, right? So your Hampton Inn, your Holiday Inn Express, and your Comfort Suites are your highest-tier hotels. So if you're looking to attract higher-end business, higher-end groups, they'd rather travel to the Hilton and Rockwall to stay, right? There's nothing to have, there's nothing to accommodate them here. So out of 10 hotels in this trade area, every single one's mid-scale or below. And so what we're proposing is to bring a more upscale property that's going to keep the man leaving your city in your city, right? So because there's not any existing demand here that's directly, that we think is comparable to what we're proposing, CBRE went out and they looked at adjacent markets that they think are comparable to what a hotel like this would do, right? So they went to the Courtyard in Allen, and the Marriott in Allen, the Hilton in Rockwall, where your constituents said their people are going, Sheridan McKinney, and the Embassy Suites in Denton, because they're all meeting-oriented facilities, they're more upscale nature, and that's how CBRE benchmarked this hotel's performance, based on these hotels, because there's nothing comparable locally. So this, this chart tells you what CBRE estimates the hotels in the immediate, the hotels that they're benchmarking against does. So average occupancy, 68%, average daily rate about $155, the average of those five hotels, six hotels. And you'll see, if you remember, the expected performance after fully stabilized, this hotel is projected to do 68%, so right, right on par with where the other hotels are doing. So the set here, I put this on here to show you, remember, those select-service hotels in the immediate Greenville area, this is what they're doing, about mid-60s occupancy, so a little bit lower than what the proposed hotel will do, and a rate closer to $100. So significantly below what your new hotel could do. Few other anecdotes, few other points here, based on interviews, a significant portion of the new supplies demand will come from travelers turned away due to capacity restraints. So a key here, we're not stealing hotel demand from other hotels in the market, right? So local hoteliers aren't gonna come and say, hey, you're building a hotel, you're taking all my, all my guests. Most of the demand that's gonna come from your new hotel is gonna be demand that's, that wants to stay here but can't stay here. So we call it induced demand coming into the market. This, and this just shows you, so 17,000 room nights will be generated from this hotel, right? So there are currently 17,000, over 17,000 room nights that wanna stay in Greenville that aren't staying here because there's nothing to support that business. And that's, that's just the key points that I wanted to walk through. So happy to answer any questions you have about the market study, about phase one, but just wanted to kind of talk through the highlights, what CBRE found. Again, this is all third-party data that they conducted, they just talked to us through program.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
With the study you provided, the average room rate in Greenville at $100, and you're saying that, that you think we could support 175 a night, like people pay that here?
Yes, sir. So, and we've seen that, so a couple things. One, this hotel is gonna be significantly up-tier than where the hotels that you saw were, that's one. Two, the demand coming to this hotel versus hotels that are currently in the market is going to be able to command a higher rate. And three, the $179 rate you're referring to is in 2030, okay? So you add inflation to it, it escalates, but yes, that, that, and again, that's, that's one of the, when we, CBRE initially sent the draft to us, we went back and forth, and there is data that they conducted to support that $179 rate.
How was the size of 14,000 square feet, how did that come up? How was it figured?
Yeah, so they, so they, they start from a benchmark, they know that the convention center is kind of what we're aiming for, right? We know they need the meeting space, and at that point is, how big's the meeting space? So to give you an example, we have 200-room hotels, 250-room hotels with almost 30,000 square feet of meeting space, right? So one is, is how much can Greenville bear, right? Because there's not really any meeting space here, so we're kind of, we're kind of walking off, working off scratch. So they go to the local community to say, hey, where are your meetings being held? What meetings are we losing, sports, et cetera? And then a second thing is, they talk to us about, about what we think the city can afford, right? If they came back and said, hey, Greenville can do 30,000 square feet of meeting space, I mean, that's great news for you, that's not what they said, but I don't know if Greenville can necessarily support it, right? Because there's a gap there that Ray and Steve talked about. So we, we look at it, we need at least 10,000 to qualify, and 14,000, I think, is efficient for a 175-room hotel. So there are ratios that you consider for X number of keys in a hotel, how much meeting space do you need? They take current demand that's being lost, and then they take the cost perspective.
And often you'll see somewhere between 50 square foot per key and 100 square foot per key, it's kind of on the higher, higher range, so that's kind of where we are. And it's, you know, we, we try to look at things like, how big is the ballroom space? And these are all things that we're gonna kind of work out together, you know, how big is the ballroom space, the breakout space, it's different, probably is a boardroom for some corporate, small corporate meetings or small meetings, so, you know, it's a, it's a bit of different space, it's not all just one big ballroom, but you need to have a ballroom so you can do the weddings, and you can do the gala events, and you can do the, you know, there's a lot of things that I think the community that, you know, it's, the job of this hotel is going to be, to bring in high-impact business for the city, people that come and stay, but there's going to be dark nights in that ballroom that can do all kinds of events on a Tuesday, or on a Wednesday, or on a Sunday night, that the city really gets to be able to use that facility.
All the hotels that I'm responsible for, the community and the surrounding communities do weddings, proms, graduation parties, so it is really an asset for the community that they've really taken advantage of, too.
What are some examples of, of groups that you know of that are looking for like a 10,000 to 14,000 square foot space?
So I didn't conduct interviews, right, and the study didn't highlight any, this group said they're looking for 14,000 square feet of meeting space, so I can't answer you directly.
But in your, in your experience, you guys are, we're going to you because of your experience, so what, what do you guys know of groups that look for 10,000 to 14,000 square foot?
Yeah, so any, any groups, especially associations that wanna come in, so if there's any association of real estate, or commercial real estate, or, or defense contractor, or anything that, that's looking in the area, associations especially, book a significantly more than 14,000 square feet of meeting space. Corporations-
So that would take us out of the running if they booked more than 14,000 square foot?
I'm sorry?
So that would take us out of the, out of the running if they're looking for more than 14,000?
Yes, sir, and I'll be honest, our biggest hotels sometimes get knocked out of the running because if you think about, think about the New York Auto Show, or any, or any major conference, they're only gonna go to New York, and LA, and San Francisco, so that knocks, that even knocks Savannah, Georgia, or Nashville out, right? So it, every market's gonna have groups that they can't bear.
But if you, but if you do a, you know, let's say we did a ballroom that was 8,000 square feet and it could seat 500 people for a gala event, this hotel, let's say, only has 150 rooms, 175 rooms, so only 175 are staying here, the other 325 are staying in all the other hotels around the city, right? As far as they have to go. So there becomes a point where the, the hotel, the hotels that are in the area can only bear so much, so you couldn't bring a 2,000-person venue here because they just can't all stay, or they all drive and kind of all over. So we really look at that sweet spot, and that's what we'll start to do when we decide, how much of that 14,000 square feet is a ballroom, and how much of it becomes secondary space for like, you do the meat, and then you do the kind of the feed where you go pick up your buffet and go back to tables or whatnot, so we can kind of play with all that. But that's a good question, and we'll go to Andy and the CBR folks and say, what size groups was the majority of all this, and what's the, what's the top group that we're not gonna take? Because if it's, you know, you don't wanna build this, if there's one group that was 1,000 people that said they wanted to come here, you don't wanna build a room that holds 1,000 people just for that one group, right? You wanna, you wanna get the sweet spot of that group, and smaller groups are really the group that make more money from, really, for the most part, anyway, so. It's gonna be kind of something that, as we kind of get to, you know, through Section Two and Three and build that business case, it's kind of an iterative process.
Yeah, because I mean, an 8,000-square-foot banquet hall won't even support the city's regular events that we have.
Yeah.
And we'd still have to go outside, the city would have to go outside of the city.
How big, how big does the city use?
I mean, right now, we're in a space that's around 10,000 square feet, and then we're, we're outgrown.
Yeah.
There's not room for enough stuff. So I think, I think 14,000 isn't enough.
There's also, we, there's a couple different ways, so this is not final, right? This is gonna go, once we get to the next steps and we have pricing, that's when we're gonna, we can say, okay, we can add here, we take away here. There's also adjacent space, so if there are certain events that we know we need to accommodate, there are, you know, exterior pre-function areas that we can utilize, there's, there's different ways that we can incorporate space to make sure we accommodate, if there's necessary demand. So we're used to that, our team is used to that, but this is just kind of their fairway. This, I would be, I'd be highly surprised if we landed exactly at 175 rooms and more likely, exactly at 14,000 square feet of meeting space, right? That's gonna be, it's gonna change based on programming, based on pricing, et cetera.
Just because, because when I heard we were doing a convention center study, I thought this was gonna be a hotel that had banquet space, and then an additional convention center space onto it, and I really think the 10,000, the city or the state classifying 10,000 square feet for a convention center is a joke.
So i-if we, and here, if we were to do a 20,000, if we were to propose a 20,000-square-feet convention center, there would need to be a bigger hotel to support that. And at that point, you're, you're trying to find the sweet spot, because if you have a bigger hotel, then you're gonna have a lot of empty rooms, right? And it's gonna cost you a lot more to build that hotel. So our mission is to find you the sweet spot and meeting space and hotel size that's gonna, that's going to reduce an income for you.
Do you look at just, do you look at, do you look at attendees staying just at that hotel that's adjacent to it, or staying at neighboring hotels as well?
Oh, absolutely, all over. Matter of fact, we're, so we're doing the hotel right now, a 204-key hotel in Jefferson City, Missouri, it's throwing off between 9,000 and 10,000 room nights a year to the other hotels in the neighborhood. So I guess one of the things I'd say is, talking about the square, square footage piece, we wanna make sure it's the right square footage, right, that you're gonna get, get the most out of it, and we can look at all kinds of things. When we're looking at the concepts, we can look at what a bigger ballroom is, and we'll let you know what it costs, because, and we'll be able to show you kind of what the difference is in the city input because of this. If you really want that, it might cost this, and so you can make those decisions.
I, I would like to know what, what associations are saying what size they're looking at, and what other events other than associate, like, like I know the cheerleading and, and Jeanette, like, there's, there's a lot of other events out there that, that can fill up a convention center for a night.
Yeah, and your, your recreation center, right? That's gonna, it's hard to, it's, I mean, to talk to groups that are going to go there, right? Because they're not there yet.
And this, this should be complementary to that, this isn't gonna compete with that, this isn't a concrete floor with bar joists and, you know, you're not doing volleyball in the ballroom here, that's just, that can't happen, right?
Yeah, no, I'm not saying volleyball.
So it needs to, it's probably a little bit more finished out than you would see at the rec center, but it should work together. Amateur athletics should be a huge part of the groups that are coming in here, because not everybody wants to stay at the cheapest hotel in town when you're out with your kids. Sometimes you wanna take a great shower, and be able to go down to the bar and get a drink, and maybe eat in a restaurant, you know, so.
I'd like to talk with CBRE one more time. Because the iterative process that Steve described that we're doing with Jefferson City, Missouri, excuse me, it's the capital city of Missouri, but it's a pretty small community, two and a half hours from Kansas, from St. Louis and three hours from Kansas City. They're busy from January to May because the legislature is, and all the lobbyists and so forth are there. And the study, initial study, said that, and they've lost all ability to bring groups to that city over the last 10 years. They have two 50-year-old full-service hotels, which are in awful condition, and everything else is limited service. So they've lost all this business. They have a very aggressive CVB, Convention and Visitors Bureau. That's a question I'd like to ask CBRE, because I assume they interviewed the CVB here, and, and got from them all the groups that they pursued over the years. And, and data such as how many people have turned down coming here because there's not the meeting space that you need, or how many people have turned down because there are not enough rooms or the quality rooms that they look for, that's the kind of stuff I thought was in this study that we've got from CBRE.
Yeah, and one thing I'd like to also say is, we always try to have a plan of expansion. So if it's 175 keys now, is there a way for us to bolt on another 50 keys or 100 keys and not have to close the hotel? Is there a way to take that ballroom and add a junior ballroom next to it without having to close the hotel? So we're always trying to look at those, those pieces, because you're right, once you get the groups in, Greenville continues to grow, it's got a lot of growth, you may need more in the future.
And how we got to the 204 rooms in Jefferson City, and again, this is this collaboration we're suggesting we go into in the next few months with you. The study said they needed 250 rooms and they needed 39,000 square feet of meeting space in Jefferson City. And when everything came back and then we went through this kind of phase two and three and looked at the costs and looked at the capitalization of the deal in order to be able to build it, it was too expensive for Jefferson City. So basically we went back and said, all right, with CBRE, where can we take this? So we went from, I think, 39,000 to about 29,000 square feet of meeting space and from 250 to 204 rooms. And the induced demand that they projected was still our ability to bring all this meeting space back into the city to be able to recruit from around the state. And it would generate nine to 10,000 extra room nights every year for the other hotels in the marketplace because our 204 rooms wouldn't handle all the meetings that were coming there. And that's where we are right now, moving forward onto our next, next stage. It may be something similar here, we just don't know. But I hear you, Councilman Cruz. If eight, if 8,000 square feet is just too small and maybe 10,000 is where you're at now, but you may need 12, then design it where you have your 12,000 square feet of meeting space or maybe it's subdividable during, during other meetings where you can get these floating walls and, and have two 6,000 square foot spaces or 3,000 square foot spaces in there. That's part of the flexibility of the, of the program. So anyway, more questions, please.
I do have one. I'm curious, so the, the numbers you gave us before for year three of operation, do we have projections for year one and two so that we know kind of what we're expecting?
Yeah, so I, I didn't put them on here. There, that in hotel, you know, there, it's a ramp period, so I, roughly it's 62, 64, 68. So I remember the first year NOI is two and a half million. So year two would be, call it 3 million.
Mm-hmm.
Five is.
These, these hotels, they do, they do take a series of years to ramp up. And so when we're putting together the bond piece and with all the financing, we look at a, a two-year ramp up to make sure that there's reserves that can cover that hotel and cover, cover debt service while it's, while it's ramping up.
How often do you find that year three underperforms?
It really varies because you're predicting the future, right? At this point, we're predicting four or five years in the future. I would say CBR is pretty good. If it's a miss, it's not a wholesale miss and then there are times when it outperforms too, right?
Yeah.
So it's kind of, it's kind of the average where it goes, but doing this long enough, we make sure that we put enough in reserves where we have a buffer in case it misses.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I have a question. I'd like so tonight or we're considering this task two, task three, which I think you called it that. Can you just briefly frame the deliverables out of that and, and what that, what that would be? I guess there will be.
Sure.
Okay.
So, so, so this entire piece, all of it, the whole, if you take all of it through tasks five, we're, it's, it's a final report. It's going to be a document that starts with the market study that CBRE did, task one, and then, and then it just builds on from there, okay? And that final report, it, it really kind of is the, is the map for everything. It says what we've all looked at. We, if we did go through any kind of big item engineering and, and ended up, or, or we ended up growing the meeting space because the city has a need for X, Y, and Z, and we can explain all that. Task two and task three, the, the kind of the next, kind of immediate things are, if you look at task two, architectural concepts, interior design and development manager, we're, we're going to produce architectural plans, elevations, sections, models, parking schemes, figuring out how we get access from the roads, et cetera, et cetera, of this property. And we'll have, we'll have all that. And then in, along with an interior design option, you know, to say, hey, this is how it's part, it's Greenville. We don't just take hotels and just stamp them down and drop them in. This is going to be of the place. It needs to feel like Greenville. And then task three is going to be the estimate piece. We will put together the full budget, everything that, that is needed to develop and open this hotel. And that all starts with the construction cost of the building and has everything down to OS and E, which is operating systems and equipment, you know, the kitchen equipment, FF and E, furniture fixtures and equipment, which is the furniture, the carpet, you know, everything, the televisions that go in the rooms, all that. We come up with the budgets for all of that. And we're, we're, you know, I think we're.
But at the end of that, that's an iterative process. So if you need more or less conference center, more or less rooms or whatever, that's an interactive process we'd have.
Absolutely.
And based on.
And we look forward to the back and forth with the council for sure.
Right, okay.
Is that a process that would play out in work sessions like this one or what, what would that look like?
Could, could absolutely. I mean, we, we, you know, we've seen, we've done a lot of.
A special work session.
Okay, yeah.
I, I mean, a couple of things, you know, I, I think things like brand, when, when we get down to the serious point of picking a brand, we think, I mean, that's something that needs to stay confidential because obviously we'd be all negotiating with a hotel brand and we don't want to say, hey, this is what we're doing. So those kinds of things. But I think, you know, most of it we could do, we could present, you know, in, in open council, whatever you guys are comfortable with.
We have a special committee for that comprised of Tim and myself and Philip, but I don't know. I know the whole, entire council would want to be involved at some point.
Right, yeah. My, my big interest in phase two is the architectural part. The rest of it, you know, you guys are, can handle that just fine, but I'd like to see something much more traditional, even like, you know, something you see in the picture there than a big glass box.
Oh, of course.
Everybody knows of big glass boxes. I'd like to see something more like that.
Yeah, no, that's beautiful.
Yeah, we, we, Steve, he leads that effort and it's, it's all, it fits the space.
Yeah.
You never do something that's ultra-modern in a very historic area or vice versa.
But the key is location. That's the key, location. That's the key, location.
So are there any other questions any council members have? If we do, well, we certainly, yes, certainly appreciate this. We'll consider it and we'll get back to you.
Awesome.
Maybe later on today.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Do you, would you like to add anything?
No, no, I think, I mean, look, we're excited. This is what we do. We know it's a hard decision. We know these things are expensive, but this process is kind of the due diligence that a city needs to do to get to, to the answer, which is typically six to nine months of, of work that we can do in six months sometimes. Sometimes takes a little bit longer. We'd, we'd love to be able to kind of get a rhythm.
We've had some vacancies on the council and I think that's why we're delayed a couple, I think a couple of months based on our expectations. So I apologize for that.
No worries.
Yeah, sure. Ray would like to add something.
Yeah, we've, we've become pretty well-known for just being so frank and, and open about this whole process with every city that we've gone to over these last almost three decades. It's a public-private partnership, again, to do something of this quality. First of all, it's the meeting spaces you need. You don't have the meeting space, you know that, and, and you want to build it right. And to support it, you need a headquarters hotel, a hotel that will enter into a room block agreement with the convention center space, with the Convention Visitors Bureau, the people that are recruiting to bring meetings into the city. So that hotels can make a lot of money if they just rent their rooms every night and transient business will, if there's rooms available, they'll pay a higher price. But when you have to reserve half your rooms a year out so that the CVB can bring in a 300 or 500 or 600, you know, group business for two or three nights, that's part of the idea of, of a headquarters hotel for a, you know, for a meeting hotel. But it is, it is a collaboration, financial collaboration. You need to understand that. I mean, when we, when we built the Overton for the city of Lubbock, Lubbock sold 11 point, I want to say 11.5 million in bonds. They raised 11 million in foundation grants. So the contribution from the public sector was $22.5 million, about 34% of the total cost of the ultimate hotel and conference center. And Abilene with the Doubletree that we just opened about a year and a half ago, which by the way is performing so well. And, and it's a great recruiting tool. I mean, if you think that six months ago, the White House announced that Stargate, the first AI, you know, advanced program in the country, would center in Abilene so that there are 10,000 people now coming into the city building data centers for AI, you know, development. That, having that hotel, the first full-service hotel built in that city in 50 years was a great magnet, a great attraction to them. So again, I, I think it's a, it's very valuable public piece of, of, of real estate, of infrastructure. So again, in Abilene, they sold $23 million in bonds and they raised 19 million in foundation grants in the city of Abilene to do the hotel that supports their convention center across the street. They're, they, they're in the minority in terms of their ability to go out and get some of the, some of the very wealthy families and foundations and so forth within the community to listen to their need for this piece of infrastructure. And in Irving, Texas, where we built the Weston at the Irving Convention Center, we were the fifth developer in 16 years that the city selected. We competed 16 years earlier in the year 2001 and lost. We didn't win because we wanted to do a tax exempt hotel and they didn't understand what that was at the time. They hired a developer out of Atlanta, he didn't succeed. Next developer, next developer, next developer. In 2016, and by the way, they built their convention center in 2011, opened it. I know you, you've seen pictures of it. It's a very modern building, quarter of a million square feet. And it failed to produce high-impact business from 2011 to 2019 when we opened the Weston Hotel across the street, their headquarters hotel. But it took them five tries to hire the right developer and, and their contribution was about $38 million to build about $120 million hotel. And they are a qualified hotel, so they get all the rebates. So does Abilene, so does Lubbock. They, they're allowed to get the 10 years of rebates from the state, which has helped them do the deal. So I want you to understand that this quality of development, there'll have to be that sort of collaboration. And if, if there's not the appetite to participate in the financial support of, of that, we understand and that's okay. But I don't want you guys to think that we can come up with a solution and spend twice as much as any private developer is going to spend to develop the kind of hotels that are here now, that are limited service hotels, and, and not have to have a subsidy, at least a subsidy request from the city of some kind. Please understand that because we don't, we hate surprises and other than good surprises. Okay?
I think Councilman Freeman pointed out, I don't know if you've heard him, but the location and everything and location with surrounding retail and that sort of thing also.
We're used to that. We really are. We're getting ready to submit a solicitation to Fargo, North Dakota because they have a solicitation to build a, about a 40 million, it's really going to be a 50 or 55 million dollar convention center. They think it's going to be 40. And they'd like to see a hotel developer come in and build a hotel next door to support And the request was to present, along with your team, a specific site to develop it on. And I called the city manager a couple of weeks ago and I said, we can't submit because we don't know enough about the sites in Fargo. We suggest that you just get the most qualified team that you can select and then work with that team to look at the various sites in your community, rank them, negotiate them, get the right site as, as well. And that's certainly something that we can, we can do in collaboration with you guys. Thank you very much. We really appreciate being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No more questions. Thank you. Thank you for coming over this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a review of the departmental highlights. Summer?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are in the part of the budget process where all of the departments have presented to you guys. And so what this will do, well, this will be kind of the highlights of those presentations. We started this back in May, so it's been a couple of months since we've reviewed that. So this is just kind of a reminder. And then the, the next process will be actually the proposed budget that I will present to you guys on August 12th. And that'll be everything that we were able to fit into this budget. As of Friday, we will have our certified values. We have preliminary values and that's the numbers that we've been working off so far in regards to personnel and in regards to CIP and things like that. So nothing's finalized at this point. Once we get those final numbers on Friday, we'll know things like the NOE revenue rate, things like that, that we can plug in, working with the tax office to be able to do that. And so this is just going to be a review. So it's kind of a high-level review of the personnel that they've requested, the CIP, which is the capital that they've requested, and kind of what the assumptions were when we, when we built these numbers out. So just to start off with, just the first little bit here, preliminarily, so this number will change, we're at about 351,000 per one cent on the tax rate. So that's compared to 322,000 last year. And I know you see the, assuming 101% collection rate, which that's been the normal for the past three years. So that was what we collected last year. We'll either be at 100% or 101%, depending on kind of what we get with the certified values. So there's been a lot of over collections. I can't explain why we've collected that much. I think probably my most educated guess is probably COVID. They delayed a lot and then now they're kind of catching up with maybe taxes and things like that would be my guess. I don't really have any good ideas to why we've been over collecting for the last three years. So, but that's where we're at. That's what we're assuming when we, when we go into this budget process. You know, typically before, actually before COVID, we'd collect, we'd assume 98, 99% collections, things like that. But even on our delinquent taxes that have been paid and even interest on those taxes that we collect, we budget pretty low on those and we've over collected on those too from a budget perspective. So, so that's just kind of the trend that's been the last couple of years. If y'all remember, Fire Department, their budget was initially a 9% change from 24, 25 to 25, 26. They did not request any personnel. So we have, we've, we've completed all our pay plan meetings. We've completed all of our capital meetings with all the, I do have one with the fleet that's remaining that I have to finalize everything with the fleet and enterprise. So you won't see that until the proposed budget. But capital was the SCBA, six of those at 51,000, a rope and rescue tripod at 10.5 and then backup generators for every single station, which ended up, we, if you remember, we initially presented that project last year, but we under budgeted by a lot. And so we came back, we got an estimate of a little over a million dollars for backup generators. So that's what was requested. That's what we've got in there. That's something we might look into phasing in from that perspective going into the future. Police Department, their change was at 8%. If you'll remember, we do have built in there a 10% increase in insurance that was borne by the departmental budgets, not by the employees. And then we also have a 5% merit in there. Now, on the police department, we did some pay plan adjustments. We did an additional 0.25%. So in theirs, there's a 5.25%, basically 0.25% pay plan adjustment and then plus the merit, which public safety gets the merit regardless across the board. So theirs is really not a merit, theirs is just an increase between public safety for civil service. They did request two, a lieutenant, which is be a cost, an operations lieutenant, which had a cost of 175, a little over 175,000, and then two patrol officers at 274,000. thousand, and then two patrol officers at two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Capital they requested would be the spillman, which is their software that they actually do their whole entire business with between dispatch and records and everything. And so that's, if you guys remember, you guys approved that preliminarily based on what you guys approved in the budget a couple of meetings ago. So the initial cost of that is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The Axon Taser replacement at seventy-one thousand, the traffic safety trailer that they utilize throughout the town at twenty-one thousand, and then a crisis negotiator phone. We did, back in February, staff did rank all of the CIP. So once I'm able to get those final numbers, I'll look at the rankings, I'll look at what they requested and things like that. There has been some new initial capital that's been requested since those rankings, so I'll have to work those in and decide and make that decision. But I'll base everything based on those rankings, once we know how much capital we can build in, on the general fund side and also on the water fund side. Community Development, they were at a little over eleven percent increase. The only personnel, no capital requested there. Personnel that they requested was an assistant director. So we shifted the fifty thousand that we allotted from contracted services from this current year. The total cost is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, so really the increased cost is a little over a hundred and sixteen thousand. You'll see that on a later slide. But that is what they requested for next year. On the Parks and Rec side, he had a twenty-eight, twenty-eight point four-four percent change. This includes all the new full-time positions that we've phased in over last year and this year, and I'll show you those on the next slide. This does include the city match of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, which last year would have been three hundred and twenty-three thousand for the park development fees. So that's something that Council decided to work in when we started the park development fees. Sports Park Phase Two is twenty million, so that's the big one that we've had in there for a couple of years now. He's requesting an alert system, a little over eleven thousand, John Deere rail unit, which we can, two options, we can either purchase at ninety thousand or we can lease it for forty-eight months at nineteen thousand a year. So those are a couple of options there. And then the East Mount Cemetery Road at three hundred and sixty-six thousand. So that's been on the capital list for a couple of years now as well. And then here is the personnel that has been requested. Additions for the new rec centers. So eight full-time, which is a total cost of five hundred and forty-five thousand. And then there's your listed out one between the park planning coordinator, that's just going to be in the parks and the regular operations of the parks, and then every, all the other seven full-time. RDC is Reese Davis Center, Sports Park Center, you've got your aquatic coordinator, your recreation specialist, and your aquatic technician. So those are going to be your full-time positions that'll be for, once all those facilities open, you'll be fully staffed there. Now, the part-time there is that we have eighty positions that will help operate the Sports Park Center. So that includes front desk, gym weight room, camp counselors, head guards, lifeguards, and that twenty people buffer there. So we're only going to fund sixty of those, this budget year, sixty of those for half of a year. Obviously, the Sports Park Center is not going to be opened until quarter two of twenty-twenty-six, so there's no sense in budgeting a full twelve months of those. But those twenty that are going to be buffers, so we'll have eighty positions funding sixty of those so that there's no disruption in operations. If somebody goes on vacation, we've got one of those buffer folks that can just come in and it'll be seamless, and we won't have to worry about overtime or covering or anything like that. So that's kind of the plan that Brett's moving forward there. So on the general fund side, we'll add five hundred and forty-five thousand to personnel, and then on the recreation side, we'll add five hundred and sixteen, nothing on the golf side. So that just kind of gives you a picture of that there. Any questions on that? I know that was a lot of information. So, okay. On the CVV or the tourism fund, there was a twenty-six percent increase, and includes the tourism distribution that you guys recommend. They have a board that will do recommendations to the city council, and then you guys will divvy that out based on heads and beds and a few other criteria, and then the sports tournaments out there. If you'll remember, we did shift, so if you'll remember when Doyle was here before he retired, kind of the CVV and the tourism was kind of all together in one position. So we had a, we have a twenty-six percent decrease on the Main Street side because we shifted those funds from the Main Street over to the tourism, where it really belongs anyway. We were doing a transfer, so we just basically took it out of one and put it in another instead of doing a transfer. The only reason I think it was done that way is because that was the same person that was operating the same budget. So it was just easier for them to do expenses and things like that to it. So you'll see there's a twenty-six percent increase here on the CVV side, but a twenty-six percent decrease on the Main Street side. The only capital requested is for the additional awning at Farmer's Market that we would do on the east side of that, that's kind of, we have kind of renderings of that and an estimated cost at fifty thousand.
Is that just on like the L there?
Yes, correct. So it would come, yes, currently, yeah, it'd come off that building and hopefully we'd have enough to be able to meet the stage. So it would kind of cover that section there. It's kind of the plan preliminarily. And then on the venue management side, we had an increase of forty-seven percent. So the biggest increase there was with the increase of the capital upstairs and the increased number of events that he'll be having up there after the September opening was he'd like to increase the box office coordinator to full-time. Right now, he's currently part-time, so he's not here all the time. We have two or three people in this building that are able to sell tickets and kind of coordinate those things, but with the increased number of events that will be happening, he comes to every event, you know, he's in and out. He's not an eight-to-five kind of person just because of the events that he has to cover. So we'd like to increase that. And then he did request the GMA lobby bathroom remodel. If you remember the pictures that he showed you, they're pretty out of date, things like that. On the library side, he had a thirteen percent increase in his operational overall. The personnel that was requested was a programmer from going from part-time to full-time, so that's an additional sixty-five thousand. So it would be an internal person that's going, and she ended up getting her degree, so she would be going from a part-time position to a full-time position. And then he requested a new furniture for the library at seventy thousand, and then a bookmobile at a hundred and seventy thousand. Engineering Department, he stayed pretty flat from that perspective, so a point three-seven percent increase there. He did request on the, no additional personnel requested. He did request a PCI update, which would be for the, the road, if we do a road bond or anything in the future, we need to update that because we hadn't done that since twenty-twenty, I believe, as well as ADT study, and then also Old Mill Road Design at eight hundred thousand. So that would be an increase there. Streets and Traffic was a twelve percent, twelve point four-six percent increase. No additional personnel requested there. The capital would be a new paver at two hundred and forty thousand, which would allow them to do some of the smaller roads, not the real super-wide roads, but it'd allow them to do that in-house. And so we wouldn't have to either contract that out or hire another person to be able to do that. He did request a dump truck at a hundred and ninety-three thousand and then a premelted trailer to help with the road striping and things like that at seventy-seven thousand. Water Treatment, he had a four percent increase. The only capital, no additional personnel, the only capital requested was he would like to do the wrought iron fencing around all the pump stations, all around the elevated towers, and just really bring that up to speed instead of the old chain link things. That would be at a cost of eight hundred thousand. And then also an additional dock. We have the current one at Reservoir Four, so we'd like to add one at Reservoir Six, would be at sixty thousand.
The wrought iron fencing, is that around the pump stations at Tewocany? Is that what you're talking about?
No, any pump station, like Center Point Pump Station, any of the elevated towers in town, anything like that. We wouldn't, no, we'd keep chain link out at Tewocany because that's not visible. Nobody sees that but us. Yeah, nobody sees that. But no, this would be like at Center Point Pump Station, we'd have one at Industrial Pump Station that is just about to go out to bid. So all the ones that are visible in town, Web Tower, all of the elevated storage tanks and the pump stations there, that's where he'd like to do that. And then on the water distribution and wastewater collection, he had a decrease of one point three-one percent. That's mainly due to he lowered the amount of meters with the meter project that we were doing. He's got sufficient enough meters. Obviously, all those are going to be new. What he, only thing he needs to keep in-house now would be any additionals or any repairs. He's pretty stocked up. You guys have been able to, with the budget you had before, stocked those up the last couple of years, and so we're in really good shape there. So we decreased that quite a bit there. There is quite a few, no additional personnel on that side. Capital is going to be a lot of, so you've got Sewer, you've got East Loop, you've got Wolf City, you've got Forester, you've got Panayle, Bowie, and Park Street. So a lot of these are things that either we've had problems in the few, or in the past with, and we continue to have problems with, so we'd just like to be able to fix those. These are some of these items that we can look at also in the bond, especially that East Loop replacement at ten million. We can look in the twenty-twenty-six bond offering when we do that. That's something for the East Loop replacement would solidify around the whole entire city. So that would be, he's got it broken down into, I think, seven or eight phases. So that was something that we could really, we could do, but we could look at that in the bond for sure. Wastewater Treatment Plant, a four percent increase. The only capital that was requested, they did also request a new air conditioner, but that's going to be on the facility side, so we didn't include that there. But it's just some video surveillance with the improvements that we're doing out there. They're kind of out on an island out there by themselves, so they have no video surveillance or anything like that. So that would be at a cost of twenty thousand. On the IT side, one of our other larger departments is a thirteen percent increase. In order to assist with the new rec centers coming on, we put in a computer user specialist that for half of the year, funding it at fifty-one thousand. So that would be, they would come on at the same time that basically the sports center would come on, or they'd come on a little bit before, and then the sports center would come on, and they'd be able to support all the new technology and everything that we've got out there. The only capital requested was eventually we'd love to go to the ENCODE, which is our financial system, cloud conversion at fifty thousand, and then cloud-based security at sixty thousand. Let's see, Animal Control was a twenty percent increase. So he did request no additional personnel there. They are, you know, fully staffed. We'll knock on wood right now, but he is fully staffed right now, so everything's going well there. The dog kennel insulation at forty thousand, that's just the insulation above, it would help with noise and things like that. It's deteriorating. It really just needs to be replaced. And then also security upgrades with some fencing. He's got fences out there, but they don't connect and there's no gates. I don't really know why we have gates and things like that. So just some upgrades that we need to do out there. Airport, just a six percent increase there. Person, or I'm sorry, no personnel, no additional personnel requested. And obviously, we've got the airport advisory board that's working on some capital there, which we don't know quite what that is yet. So we had, we didn't include any in this presentation. And then on the pay plan side, like I said before, we did a five percent merit raise. We did a ten percent health insurance increase, which the departments absorbed that cost, which went from sixteen thousand one hundred to seventeen thousand seven-ten per employee. So we'll adjust that. Uriah has been in touch with our insurance broker, if that's something we can adjust down as we get closer to the time. I know if you'll remember, we've budgeted ten percent in the past and either ended up at zero percent, sometimes we end up at six percent. So we'll kind of keep working that as we go through the budget process and have a finalized number for you September ninth for sure.
He's been good to work with us on that.
Say again?
He's been good to work with us.
Yes, yes, been very good. He's always said ten percent. It's never been ten percent since I've been here in ten years, so that's good news. But we at least want to be prepared for it if that's something that does happen. Our, according, if you guys remember from Uriah's presentation last time, our loss ratio is really good right now. So I think we're in a good negotiating spot with Blue Cross Blue Shield for that. And then our TMRS did decrease from seventeen point one-seven to sixteen point nine-two. That's a blended rate. Theirs goes from January to December. So we'll have nine months of the sixteen point nine-two and then seventeen point one-seven. So it's kind of a blended rate that we use for the entire twelve months to be able to budget for. And then this is a look at all the additional personnel that was requested. So you've got your operations lieutenant, your two police officers, your park planning coordinator, all your sports park Reese Davis folks, and this is over all of the funds. So you've got library, the part-time to full-time. We did additional, part-time to full-time from municipal court. We add the communications manager, if you guys saw the press release for that, this is that additional for that one. Human resources specialist for nine months, once she kind of gets everything up and running with UKG the way she'd like to. She'd like to have that additional person to do all those trainings and wellness that she talked about. The Assistant Community Development Director, there's a hundred and sixteen thousand that I talked about, on the IT side for the computer user specialist, and then the box office coordinator. So over all the funds, over all the personnel requested, it's a total addition of one point, a little over one point nine million dollars, almost two million dollars.
What question?
Yep.
So when we're looking at this, it shows costs to the city, and I understand that includes benefits. How would we, what would, just rule of thumb, how would we see what the salary is for this? Is the portion for benefits pretty?
It's about, if you had to guess, I can get you an exact number based on the pay plan, but between TMRS and insurance and everything, its average is about thirty-five to thirty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, so for like the Assistant Community Development Director, that salary would end up being about eighty-five, at ninety, something like that?
Well, you have to remember, on hers, we took fifty thousand from what we already had in contracted services, so we slid the, so this is just additional cost.
Oh, that's additional.
Yep.
So that would be?
Hundred and sixty-six.
Hundred and sixty-six minus the thirty-five, so like one-thirty something?
Correct. Yeah, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it scales based on level?
Yeah, TMRS, obviously insurance is all the same. TMRS is, would be a little bit higher based on your salary. So, you know, if you took, let's just say a simple one would be your PD, you'd just take thirty-five thousand off of that for the lieutenant.
Okay.
Thirty, a good rule of thumb, and I'll get you an exact number, but I can, I can pull that across. But when I looked at it last, it was, I think, most of them averaged about thirty-five to thirty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So for some of these, there are new roles that we haven't had before. So like the Assistant Community Development Director, like the Communications Manager, Park Planning Coordinator, how do you go about finding a pay rate for them that's appropriate?
So during the course of the pay plan meetings, Uriah did pay studies that we figured out, you know, obviously if, you know, I told you, you know, we do that every year with every position. So she went through every single position that we had and did a pay study. She didn't necessarily get to the highest of the pay rates, but she didn't go to the lowest, but we kind of found an average. And we averaged, you know, with the DFW Metroplex or comparison, she did comparison cities, competitive cities. So she really did a comprehensive pay study to determine, okay, you know, are these people getting hired at this level or this rate or whatever the rate may be? So she did a comprehensive study of every single department, and then we kind of, when we did, looked at the pay plan upgrades, that's really kind of what we looked at. Yes, does this person need it? Can they, can they get to where we need them with the five percent merit? Yes. So we didn't do any adjustments for them. There was probably, let me think, you know, maybe twenty to thirty that we had to do pay plan adjustments additional to the merit. Some of them, we were really in line with a lot of positions, I would say the majority of our positions, when she went through that pay study or that comprehensive pay study that she looked at. So that's really kind of how she determined based on, and also, you know, like with the new positions for, especially for Sports Park and Reese Davis, you know, Brett also, in addition to her comprehensive study, you know, talked to folks, what are they getting hired at? Where are they coming from? Where could we pull them from? You know, a lot of folks.
Where's your talent pool?
Where's your talent pool going to be the best for those? Because those are kind of, you know, like an aquatic supervisor, that's just something you're just going to find in every city. You know what I mean? So you got to, with those positions, you got to compete with the Allens and the Plenos and things like that, because our comparison cities don't have those facilities. So we don't have those positions to compare to.
Are we expecting, especially for the rec center, a lot of the part-time roles to be coming from students, commerce?
I would assume so, yeah. I mean, I know they met last week and they did a planning, a planning session. I don't know if Brett wants to say something.
Start asking questions when people come in.
I know, they start. So, but they did a planning sessions for a hiring fair for that. So, I mean, if you want to ask specifics, I mean, certainly those two could answer those questions, because I'm going to let them handle that. That's their expertise, not mine. So, but yeah, I mean, I would assume so. I mean, that would probably be a good pool to pull from, you know, and they're seasonal. We're twelve months out of the year too, whereas some of those might be seasonal. Over there, kids end up staying, you know, or students, I don't say kids, but students end up staying in Commerce or in Greenville, then are in Commerce, they could definitely be an opportunity for them, so.
Okay. That's it. I didn't have more specific questions.
The city of Dallas, I think, is trying to hire hundreds of police officers, as you know.
Well, yeah, they're mandated, I think, by their charter now.
I hope it doesn't impact us, but. I hope it doesn't impact us, but...
Yeah, I mean, uh, I'd have to ask chief, uh, I don't know, I don't remember.
Here goes another one.
I don't know how many we get from the Dallas area. I mean, or from DPD, I don't know, you can answer that question.
Uh, we've pulled one lateral from Dallas Police Department. Our pay is competitive to theirs. It's just a matter of getting people to come this far across the lake. Uh, part of our s- strategy for recruitment is we're gonna put a, out slides about tired of driving across that bridge, stay on this side of it, and see if we can't pull some more officers from that area.
Let them drive from here to Dallas and...
My 30.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that work over there that are very frustrated with that drive.
Yeah.
It's just trying to get us competitive enough where they can get comfortable making that change. And it's hard to get people to make that change. They get comfortable, they know what they have, they just don't know over here, so. We're working on it.
We'll get there. So, any other questions?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay, perfect.
You're gonna have your spreadsheet.
Depends on these out there.
Items you either add or subtract.
That's correct.
Anything that you do for us at some point in time.
Well, yeah, normally the finance director does that, but I'm the finance director and the city manager at this point, so yes, I will be doing that for you, yes. But yeah, I'll do a, um, I'll do a presentation kind of with all the facts, and then we can go through that process. Well, we'll go through that process, Mayor, on September 9th. So August 12th, I'll do a presentation of everything that we've included, tax rate, all those good things. Um, and then on September 9th, and we'll have the opportunity to do that process during the work session. Um, if we need to do more, then certainly we could push anything we needed to, to that second minute, uh, meeting in September, if you guys felt like that was, um, needed. So we'll go through that process. Um, and like I said, important dates, August 12th, I'll be presenting the proposed budget to you guys, uh, for council. Um, and then also the pu- we're, at this time, actually tonight, we will be setting the public hearings for the tax rate, um, the budget, um, those two, those two hearings will be on September 9th. Yep, on September 9th, and then, and then we'll do all of those items there, which is, um, approve the tax rate, you have to adopt the budget, you have to ratify the tax rate, and then you adopt the tax rate. So all those good things in the, in the crazy order that doesn't make sense, yes. So, other than that, um, that's all I had for tonight.
Okay, well, that concludes our open session, open part of the work session, and it's 5:30, and we're going, we will be now going into executive session for consultation with city attorney under the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, or Graphs 1 and Paragraphs 2 for the terms listed on the, for the items listed on the agenda. So we'll go back here at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
As far as I know.
I have a brief session.
No, no. You really do not have to.
Okay, I'll call this regular session of the Greenville City Council to order. Let the record reflect, it's about 6:06. And for the invocation, we have Faith Outreach Church, Reverend Moore. Could you please come forward with the invocation, please? Thank you, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we just want to say thank you, Lord, for this time. We thank you for this day. You said this is the day the Lord has made. I will rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we come to you today with a grateful heart, Lord, for this opportunity to serve our community. Thank you for the gift of leadership and the trust that the people have placed here in this council. Father, we ask for your wisdom and guidance as this council makes decisions that impact the lives of our neighbors, our families, and future generations. Help them to lead with integrity, fairness, and humility. Let every discussion this evening be marked by respect, understanding, and a desire for a common good. Bless our city, its people, its workers, its leaders, and let peace and unity dwell among us. Grant safety to those who protect and serve and provisions for those in need. We ask these things in the matchless name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me. Would you lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. We have some proclamations to make. First one is for National Health Week. Is somebody here to care about that? Hmm? Okay. Hello, how are you?
How are you?
How are you doing? So y'all want to introduce yourselves? Would you like to do that?
Sure.
And then we'll...
I'm Bernice Brown, coordinator of social services with CareBite.
I am Jeannie Dunlap, and I am Director of Behavioral Health at CareBite.
I'm Bernice Brown, Coordinator, Coordinator of Social Services with CareBite.
I am Jeanne Dunlap, and I am Director of Behavioral Health at CareBite.
Hi, I'm Michelle Carter. I'm the CEO for CareBite.
Hi, I'm Stan McKee, and I'm currently serving as Chair.
I have a proclamation for you tonight for National Health Center Week 2025. Whereas the, in nearly 60 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventive healthcare in our nation's medically-underserved communities. Whereas, community health centers are a critical element of the health system, serving rural areas, often providing only accessible and dependable source of primary care in their communities. Nationwide, community health centers serve one in every five residents in rural areas. Whereas, community health centers develop new approaches to integrate a wide range of services beyond primary care to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. Whereas, community health centers are locally-owned and operated small businesses that help power local economies by generating over $115 billion in economic activity annually. Whereas, during Healthcare Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of Americans' health community centers and their vital role in shaping the past, the present, and the future of Americans' healthcare system. Now, therefore, the Greenville City Council does hereby proclaim the week of August 3 through the 9th of 2025 as National Healthcare Center Week. So, thank you and congratulations. And here is your Bernice, here's your proclamation, or whoever wants it.
Please.
I'll squeeze in a little bit. I'll lay that down.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We have another proclamation tonight. We have several proclamations. Okay, this is Workforce Solutions for North Central Texas. So, you come up high, don't you? And introduce yourselves, if you would, please.
Hi, I'm Danielle Davis, Senior Education Partnerships Coordinator with Workforce Solutions North Central Texas.
I'm Fred Schmidt. I'm Senior Manager for Industry and Workforce Engagement. You're very appreciative, and Adrian, I'd prefer to censor appreciation.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for being here. So, whereas, Workforce Solutions for North Central Texas has been a cornerstone of economic advancement and opportunity since its formal certification in May 23 of 1996. That's over almost 30 years. Whereas, its mission to deliver business-driven solutions that foster economic growth, opportunity, and a skilled workforce continues to uplift, uplift communities and strengthen regional competitiveness. And where the organization founded through a visionary effort of the state of Texas in 1993 exemplifies the power of local leadership, innovation, and coordinated service delivery. And whereas, Workforce Solutions for North Central Texas Teacher Internment, Internship Program has been recognized as a pivotal initiative in bridging the gap between classroom instruction and workforce requirements by equipping educators with real-world industry insights that better prepare students for the demands of their careers today. Whereas, Workforce Solutions also supports local employers and workers through programs such as Incumbent Worker Training Grant, which empowers businesses in Greenville beyond enhanced skill, enhancing employee skills, increased productivity, and remain competitive in today's global market. And whereas, through tireless dedication and strategic partnerships, the organization ensures that individuals are equipped with the skills to thrive, that businesses have access to competitive, and, so that businesses have access to competitive and capable workforce. So, with this proclamation, we stand as a testament to the impact and legacy of Workforce Solutions for North Central Texas, and whereas, we have had this proclamation today. So, thank you very much. I'm sorry to get through that.
That's great.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. We have one final proclamation, and I don't know if anyone's here to not to receive it, but it's to honor Lee Friendly Buffington, who, oh, I'm sorry, Lee Friendly Buffington that everybody knew in our community. Whereas, Lee Buffington passed away on June 16, 2025. He was a beloved motivator and positive presence in our community for over 25 years. Whereas, Friendly served a vital role in connecting the citizens of Greenville through his uplifting and motivating communications. And whereas, through his entrepreneurial spirit and visionary leadership, Friendly served as an ambassador of goodwill, which he did, embodying friendship, kindness, and unwavering dedication to others. And whereas, Friendly was a tireless promoter of local nonprofit organizations, including Hunt County Shared Industries, Drug-Free Greenville, Brawls for the Cause, and Remember Me. And whereas, he will be remembered for the countless acts of kindness, kindness, and enduring efforts to promote unity, generosity, and community pride. Now, therefore, the City Council of Greenville, Texas does hereby honor and remember Lee Friendly Buffington for his lifetime service, compassion, and extraordinary contributions to the betterment of Greenville and the surrounding communities. We celebrate his legacy and commit to keeping his spirit alive through continued acts of service and friendship. And Friendly was definitely a friendly of all of us here today. So, thank you. I don't know that there's anyone here to certainly receive the award, but we want to do this proclamation in his honor. So, I know many of you know him, and we all know him. Thank you very much.
Now, I'll call your attention to two items on the agenda. Citizens to be heard in public testimony. Citizens are to be invited to address the council on items that are not scheduled for public hearing or do not appear on the agenda. Public testimony occurs when citizens are invited to address the council on topics that are on the agenda, starting tonight with Resolutions, Item 8A. So, if you'd like to address the council on any of these issues, please present a citizen's comment card to the City Secretary. So, I'll start now with Item 8A. Are there citizens? Are there any citizens to be heard tonight?
I do have one. Joyce Striling.
Thank you.
Joyce Striling, 6404 Buena Vista Drive, Greenville. I've called in the past about one lot that seems to get missed. It's a city lot, as far as I know. I gave more instructions on that. It's on Wesley Street, and it's actually above a fence on the next property. So, that's really a lot taller than most of that residents call about. So, just, I've seen a few today, but that one is one that Parks and Rec or somebody needs to keep an eye on, because it's the second time I've seen it this year. Not the address, but from Jordan Street, exactly where to find it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And are there any, is there any public testimony? No, okay. So, start with Item 8A. Consideration in action on a resolution establishing the date, time, and location of the September 9, 2025, public hearing for the fiscal year 2025-26 budget. Summer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As, as I presented to you in the work session, we went over the departmental highlights, and then so the next meeting on August 12, I present you the proposed budget. But at this time, we need to be able to set the hearings for the tax rate and also for the budget. And those hearings would be on September 9. So, that would give any, and we would open that hearing to the public. So, anybody that would like to speak on the budget would be able to do that at those public hearings on September 9, if you guys set them, set those for tonight.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding this Item 8A?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Please vote. And it passes 6-0. Please let the record reflect that TJ Goss is not here. Item 8B, consideration in action on a resolution setting September 9, 2025, as the date of public hearing on the tax rate and accepting the proposed property tax rate for the fiscal year 2025-2026.
Same information. So, we'd set the, the tax rate hearing on that same night as September 9 as well. So, you guys would be able to vote, vote on the tax rate as well as on the budget of the previous one.
Is there a motion regarding this item?
I make a motion.
Second.
Please vote. And it passes 6-0. Item 8C, consideration in action on a resolution awarding the bid for the replacement of 8-inch sewer main on Pine Street to No Dig Tech LLC in an amount of $112,000. And is John here?
If he's not here, I can do it. So, what this will be, would be replacing a sewer main that goes, it's off of Park Street, and I think, I believe it goes from 4th, and I can't remember the other street. During the course of our Capitol, Capitol meetings with the superintendents and the directors, they had noted that a part of this sewer main had collapsed. And so, I said, "Well, why are we waiting until '25-'26 to be able to replace this?" And so, I said, "Let's put it on the agenda." So, he got a quote for us. Now, it's before you. The funding will come from the bond funding, which is interest earnings. So, we verified that we would be able to do that. And if you'll remember, we did also get the Texas Water Development Board loan. So, there was about the same money that we utilized for the AMI project, that 6 million. This would be that same funding as well coming from that. So, there's no, nothing additional that we purchased or anything that would be utilizing that. And so, I just thought it was important that we move this faster than the '25-'26 budget.
Didn't I say in the briefing notes that this is just for two blocks of, is that right? From Jones to?
Jones to Park.
Is that Jones?
It's only two blocks, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Park, O'Neill, Jones.
Yeah, and that's the portion that has collapsed. And so, yeah. So, I felt like that was the portion that we needed to get fixed immediately.
So, we're going to put a sleeve in it for two blocks for $112,000.
That's correct. Yes. And this No Dig Tech, they are on buy board, so that's why it didn't go out to bid or anything larger than that. And they also did, if you remember, in the current budget, they did the Main Street and, uh, Main Street Bliss, and there was one more that they did in the current budget. So, we were happy with their work. So, we decided to bring this before you.
Was there consideration to re-trench and replace this in a traditional way?
Um...
And what that might cost?
We could. The space that is there, if, I mean, it's pretty s-
Pine Street needs to be redone anyway.
Yeah. It's very small. I mean, we could, we could go back if that's what you would like to do, to be able to do it the traditional way. I don't know that it's going to be any more cost-effective. Uh, just the size, it's not, it's not a large street, and that's why we, we also awarded them the Main Street and the Bliss because of the size of it. And I mean, if you trench it, you're taking up the, you're shutting down, basically shutting down the whole street. So, there becomes problems just because those-
Are these utilities in the street itself?
Yes.
Oh, no. It, it noted in the packet that he addressed why they wouldn't use open ditch method. Said, "Replacing those pipe sections by open ditch method would be increasingly difficult because of the obstructions near or above the sewer main. The narrow width, narrow width of Pine Street and the close proximity of the customers' houses to the street allows little, no room for replacing the main by the open ditch method."
There's gas lines, other utilities, all, I mean, it's, they've got a lot jammed into a little, a little street, but because of the size of those streets, that's just the way those streets are.
Is Atmos about to open up that street anyway, as part of their?
Uh, I don't know that answer.
Atmos, Atmos was just, they just had Park Street all torn up for this same thing.
Yeah. I mean, they only do the sections, and then they pull through. So, it's a little bit different than, so, I don't know.
Right. But if you're going to make the street into a mess, you might as well do all the work.
I'd have to, I'm pretty sure ATN, the only ones that I think are still in that area are AT&amp;T. So, it'd be AT&amp;T, not Atmos anymore.
Okay.
Uh, because I think Atmos, if they're not done, they're close to being done where you, around Park Street in y'all's neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, so, I don't, I don't, it would be AT&amp;T, and of course, AT&amp;T does, they just do sections. They don't do the whole streets. And they're, they're typically on the sidewalks, too.
Right.
Well, that's possible. It's happened before, happened several times before, yes. Yes, it has.
Well, there's no possibility that we would completely redo that street in combination with this, right?
Um, if you guys would like us to, we could. We could look at it.
I mean, if it, if it's not going to save more than, you know, a few percentage dollars.
Was, was that part of the detour while, while Atmos was doing work?
Uh, Pine Street, mm, no.
Pine Street that I know of are in pretty bad shape.
It is pretty rough.
Yeah. The, where they sent, um, for travel was First Street. First Street is the one that was really, really bad.
Pretty much all the north-south streets east of Walton are in pretty bad.
In pretty bad shape. Yep. No, I agree. Yeah. No, I agree. They're on our list. They're on our list. Oh, on yours. Yeah, definitely. So, I mean, that's something, if you guys wanted us to, we certainly could.
I don't know. I'm just asking a question. It just seems like $112,000 is a lot for two blocks of, of that. But I don't know what the solution is. I do know sometimes that, for example, TexDOT, if you have utilities under the street, they want to completely remove them before they do anything.
Yeah, well, mostly with TexDOT, you have to relocate them at your own expense, typically.
No, I know. I'm aware of that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's where in the, typically, that's kind of, depending on the project, for sure.
Okay. Well, what is the pleasure of the council regarding, is there any other questions regarding this? If not, what's the pleasure of the council regarding this issue?
I move that we approve.
I'll second.
It passes 6-0. Ask the City Secretary to read the consent calendar, please.
City Council meeting minutes from July 8. Consideration on a resolution approving a pipeline easement agreement with Atmos Energy Corporation and a side letter agreement. Consideration on a resolution authorizing a contract with Oak's Construction for the construction of a VFD building at the Towahkany Pump Station.
Okay. Any questions regarding those items? If not, what's the pleasure of council regarding the consent, consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. And it passes 6-0.
I snuck in right under the.
We now have Item 10, Monthly Status Report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We'll go through, this will be for the month of June. So, during the month of June, we had 24 contractor utility cuts. We had 105 in-house pothole repairs. The street sweeper swept 258 miles. The mowed areas were mowed at 90% up till July 15. Uh, we cleared 11 intersections for line of sight. There were 61 signs that were replaced in-house. There was 18 building permits issued for the month of June. And then, there's certificates of occupancy were at 24, down from 35 in May. And then, there were 347 traffic citations issued. And then, the raw water line, not a lot of change. They're still pressure-checking everything on the north end. It's holding very well. 140 to 150 PSI, which is what it's supposed to be doing. The header pumps are being connected to the new header system, so all that project is going well. Those VFDs that you approved, that building, they will arrive at the end of this month. And then, obviously, the building will be built, and they'll be housed in that building to be able to run everything down at the Towahkany Pump Station. So, everything's going well with that. I think, I saw today that there were 85 or 86% complete with that project, with the raw water line. So, everything's going well with that. They're definitely keeping Robert very busy. Here's the mill and overlay that should start fairly soon. We've got, we're opening bids tomorrow for the Chiltonham, the remainder of this cost. So, we'll be bringing that to you to the next meeting as we open bids. I think it's tomorrow, or maybe it's next week that we open bids for that. So, all that should be starting pretty soon. And then, I'll be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
If there are no questions, or no boards and commission minutes, and is there any, I skipped one, City Council discussion of proposed agenda items, or any agenda items you'd like to discuss, or any items you'd like to discuss? Adrian?
you'd like to discuss, or any items you'd like to discuss? If not, we are, we'll now go into executive session for the consultation with the city attorney under Texas Government Code Section 551.071, Paragraphes 1 and 2, for the items listed on our current agenda. Thank you for being here tonight. I don't anticipate a vote when we come out of here. Thank you. Yes, sir, yes, sir.